Do you want to...
No, not until March.
Okay, do I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Teresa makes a motion, Todd seconds, clarification discussion, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
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 Okay, I'll call the regular council meeting to order, and we do have a quorum. We got seven hundred and eight, Linda's absent. We do have a consent agenda, and on that consent agenda, we have the treasurer's report, approval of minutes of October twenty-third, and approved payment of bills. Linda's not here to do treasurer's, so I'll try and do it. So we have payable checks in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and fifty-five cents. We have major vendor checks, including C.M. Archer, our engineer, Flynn Drilling, Missouri Loggers, Ray Lindsay Group, which is a UV bulb at the treatment plant, Smith and Turley, United Reynolds and Zigged Mind Sanitation, and those vendor checks, one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents. We had a payroll for November second that was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents, and a grand total counts payable checks of three hundred and sixteen thousand, fifty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. With that, do I get a motion to approve consent agenda? Mo Charles makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
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 Okay, with the new ward boundaries, I believe it was five hundred and six was in Ward One, five hundred and four in Ward Two, no, four fifty-one in Ward Two, Ward Three had five oh four, and Ward Four had five oh two, I believe. They were really close, I was just shocked with the numbers, but anyway, so we do...
Much more in line with how...
Yes, yeah, and those will not, hopefully we'll have that through the county clerk and ready to take ballots on the April election, the municipal municipal election, we should be in time for that, so hopefully that'll go. So five point one is an ordinance approving those boundaries, can you read that as a bill, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, they're on the chart up there.
Well, I'll tell you, Mayor, the U.S. Supreme Court cases said equal votes, you are about as close under that case, which is called Baker versus Carr, as you can possibly get. Really good job, guys.
Yeah, that was, it come out really nice.
Bill number eighteen one two four, ordinance approving and adopting new readers redistricting boundaries for the four council wards of City of St. Robert.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Todd makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number eighteen one two four, ordinance approving and adopting new redistricting boundaries for the four council wards of City of St. Robert.
A motion on the second reading. Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three two nine seven, an ordinance approving and adopting new redistricting boundaries for council wards of City of St. Robert.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
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 Okay, five point two, an ordinance appointing Bruce W. Tanner as municipal judge for the City of St. Robert. Would you like to say anything, Judge?
(laughing).
Okay, read it as a bill, please.
I will tell you this right now, you're lucky to have it.
Mm-hmm.
Bill number eighteen one two five, an ordinance approving Ernest W. Tanner as municipal judge for the City of St. Robert.
Get a motion on the first reading. Todd makes a motion, Charles seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number eighteen one two five, an ordinance approving Ernest W. Tanner as municipal judge for the City of St. Robert.
A motion on the second reading. Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three two nine eight, an ordinance appointing Ernest W. Tanner as municipal judge for the City of St. Robert.
A motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie? Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna swear in the judge now, so...
Okay, come on up front, Judge. Here come the judge.
(laughing).
That was a good song.
Yeah.
I'll just say that we really appreciate the Judge Tanner, he's been, I don't know how many years, am I good, ten years, twelve years?
Something like that, first time I was elected in nineteen...
(laughing).
All right, you wanna raise your right hand and speak after me, I, Ernest Wayne Tanner.
I, Ernest Wayne Tanner.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
So I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law.
Possess all the qualifications prescribed by law.
And the ordinance of the City of St. Robert, Missouri.
And the ordinance of St. Robert, Missouri.
For the Office of St. Robert Municipal Judge.
For the Office of St. Robert Municipal Judge.
Of the City of St. Robert, Plaski County, Missouri.
Of the City of St. Robert, Plaski County, Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of the state statutes.
The provisions of the state statutes.
Affecting cities of fourth class and ordinances of the City of St. Robert, Missouri.
Affecting cities of the fourth class and the City of St. Robert, Missouri.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of my office.
And respect the competences and information which comes into my possession.
And respect the competences and information that come into my possession.
As municipal court judge in the City of St. Robert, for which I was duly appointed.
In the City, for the position of municipal judge in the City of St. Robert, for which I was duly appointed.
This date November sixth, twenty eighteen.
This date, November sixth, twenty eighteen.
(applause).
Drive your whiffers. I need tea, guys. Lots of tea. Thank you.
Charles.
Did you want the certificate?
At least I get the picture.
I need you to sign that up before you do that.
Oh, I'll try. (laughing).
Okay. Okay, five point three.
Bill number eighteen one two six, an ordinance appointing members of the Joint Commission Central OHSR Utility Service lines, code USA.
Okay, you jumped ahead of me, but that's all right. So this, this bill is to reappoint our members from the city, and the amount of their term, last we did it was in two thousand and sixteen, and we're trying to update this. So that was Bill, what, eighteen one twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay, a motion on the first reading.
Yes.
Michael makes a motion, Teresa seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Set my contract, apologies for trying to do that. Bill number eighteen one two six, an ordinance appointing members to the Joint Commission Central OHSR Utility Service lines, code USA.
Okay, get a motion on the second reading. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three two nine nine, an ordinance appointing members of the Joint Commission Central OHSR Utility and Service lines, code USA.
A motion on the reading of the ordinance. Charles makes a motion, Teresa seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I guess there was some confusion on getting these change orders, we got one, three, five, four, and five all basically at the same time. They had a problem with the base out there, and there was a lot of confusion. We ended up putting a two-inch base, and now they're gonna put a two-inch top layer, they were only gonna do an inch, and Willard didn't think that was gonna work, so I think that's number five.
Say that again, Mayor.
On Superior Road.
Right.
The base was really rough, which probably no, so they put the two down, and then they were gonna, the contract called for another inch, but we went out there, and he just said it wouldn't hold up, he'll be back doing it three to five years. He said if I put two inches, then it would hold up for twenty, so we had a change order.
I thought it was gonna be two more of base for four total, and then the top.
No, no, just, they're doing, and probably this week, that last two inches will belong there, so with that...
Getting close, getting...
Yeah, getting close. Yeah, they're cleaning the water tank itself today, they were flushing it and sterilizing it, and that may be in service by the end of the, the morning tanks, about a week earlier than this time. So five point four, please read as a bill, please.
Bill number eighteen one two seven, an ordinance approving contract change orders one, three, four, and five for material and paving for the Superior Road Water System Improvement.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion, second. Alan seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number eighteen one two seven, an ordinance approving the contract change orders one, three, four, and five for material and paving for the Superior Road Water System Improvement.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Second motion.
John makes a motion, Teresa seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And John.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three zero zero, an ordinance approving this contract change orders one, three, four, and five for material and paving for the Superior Road Water System Improvement.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Reggie makes a motion, Alan seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Okay, five point five, if you read the newsletter this month.
Yeah.
Out in Ridge Creek, we have a, five roads that got dirt, we had Willard look at all of those, one because of a person that lives on there, and we wanted to support them, and we did, it's really the lowest one, seventeen thousand, the paved Legend Drive up there, so that he can get it in and out.
Only this time.
Yep, so we'll at least get one of the five and move forward on it, so seventeen thousand, and I think that'll be done next week, we approved it, read as a bill, please.
Bill number eighteen one two eight, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Willard asphalt for Legend Drive.
Get a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, Todd seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number eighteen one two eight, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Willard asphalt for Legend Drive.
Get a motion on the second reading.
Okay.
Charles makes a motion, Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three three oh one, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Willard asphalt for Legend Drive.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, second. Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
That's all our ordinances, wage and finance meeting, we've got one coming up.
Next week?
Next week, six...
I would like to meet John with you a little bit before.
Okay, absolutely. We, I turned in the first draft today that she's working on, and then she's gonna do the payroll, we're trying to figure out the payroll.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thirteenth, right?
It's the thirteenth, so, but you and I are in, you know, in time before then.
Yep.
We'll get together.
Public Works? Do you think Public Works?
No.
Okay, Emergency Services?
No, sir.
Park Committee, I think they're meeting for Christmas in the park, right?
December, November the twelfth.
They're meeting on the twelfth, Monday?
That's a holiday.
Monday's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
Oh, the thirteenth, yeah.
The thirteenth, yeah, I think they were doing both.
Okay, okay. Comments by Alderman, I think we went with John last week, Teresa?
Great turnout when I went to vote today, they had a good system going, there were people like me in a wheelchair laying, and they took them one by one separately, and that was good. Everything was quiet, everyone was, you know, it was just nice and easy and good. So I was, I left there about three fifteen, and I was number eight forty, so...
Huge turnout.
It is a great turnout, yes.
Charles?
Nothing.
Reggie?
Nothing.
Todd?
It was packed at six, I was there at ten to six this morning.
It was packed, yeah?
So, good, good turnout.
Yes.
Alan?
Nothing.
Michael? John?
Nothing, I am.
Okay, let's get it going.
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, comments by administration, Edna?
Okay, looking for my report, but I think I can remember it here. The sales tax report is up twenty-three percent over November of twenty seventeen for the month, year-to-date, we have a three point one eight check.
Ooh!
And that's about sixty-six thousand dollars still in there for the year, but sales tax, also after the payment of bills tonight, in the operating, operating the cash, there's like three point, two point three.
Two point three, okay.
Very nice.
And the first day of filing for the April election will be December eleventh.
December eleventh.
December eleventh.
Through January.
Who's up this, me, Reggie? Who else is up?
Actually, both of us are.
Oh, yeah?
And I am.
I did a two-year, and he did an extended one.
Okay, then who's down here?
I'm not sure.
John?
I'm not sure.
It may be...
I think it is John.
It's John.
I think it's Brad. Oh, yeah, at the same time I did, huh?
Yeah.
Anything else, Ed?
No, that's it.
Okay. Chief? Nothing? Public Works, Steve? Got a few things, huh? Ran the water out of the system today.
Oh, yeah, how was that?
Um, the electric department's been installing, I guess, the last of a few new lights on St. Robert Boulevard, down by Fairfield Red Roof Inn, we're, we're gonna put a couple there, it was a very dark area, so that should be lit up a little bit better for pedestrian traffic. I would say, oh, probably within a week, we'll, we'll have that done. We start, they probably should've had the power up on them today, but got called off to do some other stuff, so we're just kinda doing that in our spare time. The sewer department's continuing with videoing some, and inspecting some sewer mains, they've found a few creek crossings that was in a little bit bad shape, some pipe exposed, so we're trying to address those as we go. The camera truck, they've had it in the shop, they did, the last few days that was raining, they was out camering and found out they had some leaks inside, so trying to get those all sealed up, but they'll, they'll be back out probably, I would say, the end of this week, starting to camera again. And then well number eight in the Ridge Creek subdivision, it had a broken pipe inside the, the well casing, so they pulled it out this morning, repaired it, put it back down in the hole, and then, I guess, from excessive running, the motor was in pretty bad shape, so we, they pulled it completely out, replaced the motor, inspected everything, they had to change the wire too, the wire was getting in pretty bad shape, so they put it back down in the hole, fired it up, and then they found out there's another leak down in there somewhere, so they had to pull it out again, and now they're going, they went through every coupling, found a couple of bad couplings. Last I heard, they was dropping it back down in the hole when we started the meeting, and so we, everybody should be back on water tonight.
How much was the motor?
What's that?
How much was the motor?
Don't know yet.
Couplings, that's nothing.
No, it's the labor, pulling it in and out so many times, the wire is another big cost there, too, you know, 'cause I think some of those are two, three hundred foot deep, so, you know, you get, you get a little cost in some wire there, but it's one that we've never touched before, so, you know, it's one of those things. We started filling the, the Superior Road Water Tower today, and right after we started filling, we noticed there was a leak in the hatch in the bowl for the, up in the top, so the paint crew was there, they went up and was working on it most of the day to get unhatched and rehatched again, fix it. We did have one gasket and some piping inside the, the wellhouse itself, that was an easy fix, got it done, so when I come into the meeting, they was just finishing up there, they're gonna pump a little bit tonight, get it over the hatch, make sure it doesn't leak, and then tomorrow I'll go back out, and I think I need to put about fifty thousand gallons in the tower, and, 'cause we superchlorinated it, it'll set for six hours, and the fumes will, will eat everything else off inside the bowl, and then after it sets six hours, then I can fill the rest of the way up, get a million gallon in it, which is about thirty hours worth of pump time.
Wow.
And then after that, after I fill it up, then we'll be able to test it and see if we can turn it into the system.
So who's gonna stay out there for thirty hours?
We'll turn it on and come back and check it.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-nine and a half hours.
Yeah.
Got a question for Mr. Long. Steve, on the sidewalk in front of the little Jiffy Lube, St. Robert Boulevard, are they gonna put a sidewalk in front of that Jiffy Lube, in that little restaurant?
No. No, I don't think that was included at this time.
So, the only sidewalk is right there beside Cracker Barrel coming over to the bullet?
Yes.
So how are we gonna get a well?
And I think that was probably, might've been looked at for the...
It's the intersection, yeah.
Yeah, the intersection project, 'cause some of that's gonna be, I don't know, I don't know you'd wanna do it right now, if they're gonna be, you know, then they'd have to come back and tear it back out.
And then I have one statement for Chief, Mayor. Hey, Chief? Yes, sir. You know, with the, with these bus incidents that's going on, little kids being hit on the roads, I know that we have some rural highways, like Y Highway, T Highway, Highway twenty-eight, I would recommend that, you know, maybe have patrols out there early in the morning, because these cars are booking on these secondary roads, man, and with the, with the weather conditions going bad toward November and December, it's gonna be hazardous for those kids being picked up. Now, Mr. Wilking has, has operated with a couple of organizations on Route sixty-six, and he's going off the highway to pick kids up in certain areas, so especially Y Highway and Highway twenty-eight. Yes, sir. Along with the outer road, it can cause some serious incidents. That's all I have, man.
And Steve's gotta meet with the bus barn people, he's got some work with them that we're gonna do as a city. Okay, Don? No IT stuff? Give us an update on transfer station, we got all the cameras up?
All the cameras are up, then one of them has serious interference, so they're gonna bring the booster down Thursday and see if we can't clear the any of them.
Okay, and the, one at the tower out there, that's the new one, is that camera?
That was set by Lightning, and they've ordered one to replace it.
Okay.
Where was that near?
Huh?
Where was that?
Out at the water tower, the new water tower. Okay. Jay's not here. Tyce?
Um, at the, uh, transfer station, uh, the contract for the haulers are likely to sell. It's our traders, they're hauling them, and I talked to Anita at length today. Um, it seems that after I did the original contract, it started changing. And, uh, so Anita and I are going to look at some options here, uh, whether we want them to have a contract with hauler traders and have liability, or we sub-contract, and, and some of the issues there have to be addressed. So what I asked her to do is talk to the guy that owns the place, and we'll do a contract extension in 60 days. That's all right with you all, so that I can put that together, because we've got traders out there that have all kinds of different liabilities, and I wanna make sure that we have the most legally sound system for liability protection that we have. And so, um, if you give me that time, so I can craft something, because whatever contract we're gonna do is gonna be very detailed. And, uh, I wanna go through our insurance carrier, make sure everything's the way we wanna be. So, um, I'm gonna present to you a little extension contract that he'll sign, and we'll bring it to you in the first meeting in December. That contract is, is not up till December 9th or 10th. So what we'll do is extend it for 60 days, so we have time to protect ourselves.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Anita?
Yes, I actually talked to Dr. Aron's Transport Company. He said he'd be happy if he gave us the 60-day extension.
Ooh.
Um, we have been working with FEMA, same on the financing of the transfer station. CVBG on that part of the grant. We are working on the environmental assessment, sending out the tribal letters, um, doing a lot of that footwork. Ridge Creek, I picked up a couple of more annexations. I'm waiting for the paperwork to come back on. Um.
That's almost everyone out there then, isn't it?
Yeah, every time I go to put that box away, I get a phone call, which Mayor's happy, I mean, too, you know, so we'll just keep plugging on. Veterans Day Parade is on the 11th at 2 o'clock. Um, Mayor will be in the parade with bells on, so.
That starts a wingspan, right?
Yeah.
Follow his truck, he's got tons of candy.
Uh, and it'll be a lot of fun.